All right, folks, we are here with another candidate interview. Today, we have John Putnam, who is running for Santa Monica City Council. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate you coming in. Why don't you take a minute and just give us your stump speech, opening statement, like, tell folks who you are and why you're running?
Yeah, well, um, my wife and I have raised our family here for thirty years, three kids. The city to me is a place I really love and I really, it's just been uh, served us so well and our community has been giving back so much to to our family. My daughter, Elvis daughter is twenty-six and she's a special needs kid and she's been through the school system. They've been very supportive. And just the actual community itself, it's been so engaging over the years and I feel like we've been part of that for the last thirty years and you know, I'm running because I'm really worried about the city, actually. Um, I think with my own eyes and everyone's eyes out there in the the community, you can see what's happening. Um, you know, I want to effectively adjust crime homelessness and the addiction that's controlling and running rampant in our city. It's a huge problem and until we can get that going and fixed, uh, and nothing really good can happen, unfortunately, you know, to improve our economy and and improve the protection of our residents and our tourists and our businesses.
So, great, get that. I mean, like, and I tell every candidate comes in, like, everyone's gonna mention crime and homelessness. Absolutely, cuz it's the topic de jour, it's whatever, you know, interesting in Santa Monica's history, how uh, different, different subjects wax and way, right? Like, once upon a time, the airport would have been the big deal to talk about, right? Like, not this year, right? So, it's crime and homelessness. What makes you the candidate who's gonna actually be able to address either one of those problems?
Well, you know, my background, I'm a small business owner for thirty years. You know, I've always been somewhat of asymmetrical thinker, right? I look at the whole situation holistically. I just don't look at this issue, this issue independently. You can't because what's happening in our, our city, it's, 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 a lot of things are happening same time and the reaction to some of these issues that we're, we're presenting ourselves to right now is, it's more reactionary, I believe. Um, we're just kind of throwing things at, at, at the problems, try to fix them rather than think about the whole issue. My approach is, you need to look at the whole entire situation as a whole and my background in business has really taught me, you know, I've had good times and bad times, I've had issues and how to, you know, financially make things work. I've never had a partner in my life. I've never had any influx of any money. I've, I've made it all happen myself. And that's given me a lot of skills to be able to work with people, but also solve problems because if I don't solve the problems, I'm done, right? So I think that kind of leadership is what's needed, uh, to have decisive decision-making, someone who's got the courage and the ability to, to, to take these matters head-on. Now, we can, we can talk and we can debate about how we handle each of those issues and this whole, this whole matter. But it needs to be effectively addressed decisively to actually get the results that are needed.
Sure, but I do wanna debate the specifics. Quite, that is exactly what I wanna do. Like, I wanna know what the specific policies and proposals are that you have that are gonna address what you see as the crisis in either crime or homelessness or the connection therein, and then follow that up with how are you going to then implement those specifics?
Right.
So like, give me an example.
Well, we need clean and safe. That's, that's the buzzword a lot of people are using, right? Let's just talk about the homeless, right? That's, it's not this one group of homeless. It's basically about three parts or four parts. You've got the family on the street that needs help, that's maybe live in their car. Those folks want help and we, and we have so many other services, we have so many services to provide for them. We have food, we have job training, we have shelter. You know, right now, uh, we don't, really don't even know the total stats of how many, how many beds we have in the city. That's, that's one of the things that I'm trying to sort out right now, but
You're saying we don't know the total number of shelter beds?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a, a total count that's, that's been transparent to, to us.
I guess was of, of shelter beds?
Shelter beds.
Uh, or of individuals who are in said beds?
No, of, of actual number beds. A number of beds. So it's, you know, these are kind of things that are in the weeds a little bit, but we need to know how, but the people want help, we've got services for them. That's the bottom line right now, okay? Unfortunately, the majority of the folks um, don't want to help or don't know they need the help because they're mentally incapacitated or they just don't wanna move because of different reasons. I mean, we know that seventy-five percent of the people that are on the street are, are addicted to uh, to drugs, right? So it's a, it's a, it's a combination of, then you have the mentally ill, right? So you have the, you have the, the folks who are addicted and mentally ill, sometimes combined, right?
Sure. So, so a couple of things about this. So I actually don't know off the top of my head the shelter bed.
Sure.
Question, I, I don't know that number off, off the top. We can look at, I can try and look at backwards, but when you say you know, or we know seventy-five percent are addicted to drugs, how do we know that? What is that based off of?
These are studies that Santa Monica City has, has done through audits and
So you're there, Santa Monica City Information has said seventy-five percent are substance abuse issues. Again, I don't have that number
Right, they've identified that.
So that's saying overall, right? And again, I get where you're coming from on that. And I, one of the things though is like, this is a recitation of facts, which is great. But what's the policy that's gonna address some of this?
So I just wanted, so let me lead into that. So now that we know the three parts, we have the, right, we have the, the people that want help, the ones that don't want help, and the ones that don't want help are generally gonna be your you're addicted and you're mentally ill.
Sure.
Let's go with the mentally ill. So I had a, a brother at the age of nineteen develop schizophrenia. It's a terrible disease. It destroys families. They are mentally incapacitated at that point, right? Those folks, a lot of women are laying in the streets and we're not, we're not doing much to help them. Why not? Because we need to pick them up, in my opinion, get them the care they need, right? Now, what that care looks like, seventy-two hour hold is state law, or federal, I'm sorry. We get them up into the county. First thing we're gonna do is say, listen, I'm gonna find out where they're from cuz majority of everyone on the streets is not from here. They're from all over the country. We find out who the family is. We look at different options, obviously, with treatment and things of this sort. We're gonna offer them that, that way to, to, to get them assimilated back into their community if possible. Now, they come back, that's a whole different issue. We can't hold anybody over seventy-two hours, but if someone's incapacitated, danger to themselves or our community, we should be able to take them and, and take them into care.
But you can't. That's the whole point of, of a fifty-one fifty, the police hold or however, the terminology around this varies, right? Like, if someone is a danger to themselves or others, they can absolutely be held and evaluated. That's the standard. But the, the standard for them, danger to themselves or others, though, is not up for local interpretation. Like, we can't say that someone is a danger to themselves simply because they're sleeping on the street or simply because they're mentally ill or simply because they're drug addicted, you know, we, we have, it is a, there's a finite threshold for that.
But if someone is incapacitated and they're, and they're incapacitated, they can't take care of themselves, that is a point you can, you can take someone and get them the care they need at that point. If they can't take it and they're, they're being in a viola, they're being violated, right? They're being violated only because they're, they're laying in, in the street where people are walking over them even. So there's, that's a, that's a, that's a, what do you call it? It's a take on, on what you're saying. I understand it's discretionary matter also for police officers to be able to do and, and our mental health workers to go and, and help those folks. I'm not saying those people need to be incarcerated. We just need to help them.
Right, it's not incarceration, but I come back to this as a, as a matter of policy, if your policy, i- if what you're articulating is a policy of additional additional fifty-one fifties or um, the word, the other word here is, is completely escaping is the way you call it, but additional nuance. Evaluation, or no, additional evaluation of individuals, then the follow-up to that is, A, what are you going to do to make that happen? And B, why is that not happening now? Because as far as I understand it, the city of Santa Monica does not have in its jurisdiction an ability to alter the rules for fifty-one fifties. So all you can do is ask for additional discretionary efforts by the police chief or mental health workers. And if that's discretionary, why aren't they already doing that, right? Like, I, I, I'm trying to figure out how you're gonna make that happen.
I, I think we have a, a, a huge problem with the policies and the courage to enforce policies, right? Compassion is not leaving someone there, right? So the policies within the city, I think we're all asking, like, why are they so ineffective, right? That's a, that's a really good case we're talking about. That's not effective. These are, these are things we can discuss and we can, we can, and we can really address very firmly about what we're gonna do about that. Again, I'm under dwelling so much on that person on the street so much, but if they're just incapacitated and they just are not caring for themselves and, and there's nothing right about leaving someone there. Who, who, a woman, right? Think about a woman who's on the street. She's probably crimes are being committed against her and no one's doing anything about it. So my thing is like, it's time to push back on policy. I would, I would definitely look for enforcement to protect them. So, you know, that's, that's the one issue on, on, on those folks. And I think that we just had to, every time we, we can bring them into mental health for seventy-two hour hold, it's an opportunity for them to get the help they need. There's, and I would say, we continue the process. Santa Monica cannot afford this. We don't have the facilities for this. The county of Los Angeles, who gets um, close to eighty-five percent of our, um, of our tax base, you know, we get fifteen percent of property tax. They get, they get the rest. They have the funds, they say they don't have funds, but they have a lot more money than we do. They just spent, I believe it was like two, uh, two billion dollars on, on homeless housing units. So these are kind of situations, we have to really push back on the county to help us. You know, we're just, everyone's coming here. And my, my thing is we need to push back on the county and, and that, actually on the state, um, to solve a lot of these issues. If you're coming here to commit a crime because you wanna walk in the city, we need to make it uncomfortable for those folks to let them know that you come here to commit crime. We're gonna enforce the law, the quality of life laws to the fullest extent. We're not gonna put up with that. And I think right now, we've been, we've become a haven. I think we've rolled out the red carpet that everyone come here and we're a very compassionate city. I'm compassionate guy. I mean, you know, I think it's for the beauty of Santa Monica. We're a very compassionate society, but I think this pendulum swung so far over here. We've lost control to protect our residents, our children, our, our seniors.
Sure.
What about the priority of those folks?
So what, what, you know, and I've addressed this with some other candidates. Yes, what I've asked them and what you articulated there is this notion of has Santa Monica made itself a magnet for the homeless population, right? Do, are we doing things that are drawing people to us? And then the follow-up for that is then what is our moral responsibility to either cater to all the folks we draw in or stop drawing them in, right? Like, one of the two things we kind of need to do. And so what I'm hearing from you is, it does sound like you believe that we have become a magnet, that we've done things through policies that have made it, made the city a beacon, maybe too strong a term, but a destination for folks who are coming here after they've been made homeless somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and, and again, summarizing a little what you said here, what you're articulating are quality of life allowances, right? Thing, and so part of what I'm, I guess I'm curious about in terms of you on city council is what are the specific things that you're gonna direct the police chief or the city manager or housing department or whoever, like, what are you actually going to say, make people do differently, right? Because
You want some instances of what I'm gonna
Yeah, because like, we, we, you know, we just went through this at city council where like, we had to, the law had to be revised to put bed rolls and sleeping bags back in, right? And like, it's not that police officers don't do anything, it's that there are outside restrictions on how they can interact with folks, on who they can take off the street, when they can take them off the street. There's also a very high resource uh, question around transporting someone to the nearest sober psych facility, which I think is Torrance, which takes an officer out of commission for the whole day, right? There's like lots of things around this, which is, um, it sounds like what you are articulating is a increased use of tools that we already have as opposed to an implementation of new tools. And perhaps I'm wrong in understanding, but if it am, if I am correct, then what I'm curious to know is, is specifically, how are you going to make people be more efficient with the tools they have, right?
Right. Okay, so I said it before and, and I'm gonna repeat it. It's, we, we're here to protect the quality of life laws already on the books. We aren't enforcing. So your question is, is, is how to enforce that or what are the things we're gonna do specifically, right? So I think, let's take the train station, for example. That's where, you know, uh, first of all, our police department, twenty-five percent of our general budget goes to the cops, right? You got other cities who don't have these issues, like, as high as forty percent of their budget goes to this issue. I don't think we've actually funded the police properly to be able to, to actually enforce a lot of the quality of life laws that are already on the books. And those are just simple things, interaction with, with people on the street. A lot of that has been stood down because of, of lack of resources. You know, over fifty percent, to what I'm hearing, this is an estimate of their calls or homeless calls, right? If we fix this homeless issue, right? I'm not saying, and I'm not here to promise we're gonna fix it a hundred percent. That'd be unlikely. But if we can get under control and get our, our, our society and our, our community restored, the police officers will have more operational space to be able to take on other matters. I mean, I hear from a lot of residents, they get calls, they don't, unless it's like a really vast emergency, it's really hard to even get the cops there. The police are doing the best they can do. We have some of the best police officers in, in the country in Santa Monica, by the way. They're, they're highly trained. We have a really high reputation on that. So, one issue, I mean, uh, is the train. So let's just say the train brings everyone. One stop from county jail, you can get on the train and it takes you all the way here. So if you're, you're, you're a repeat person, you have this thing, Santa Monica is the red carpet, come on in, that's where we're at. I'm saying, I'm saying we need to roll back a little bit, not to be unpolite, but we want people here who are gonna be good to our society and to our community. But I would, I would, one idea I thought about was maybe, what about police officers at the train station, right? Twenty-four hours a day.
Sure.
This is, now, this is bigger pitch. If we had, we, the money and all this stuff, we have to get, we have to get money. I'll tell you about the money thing. You come into Santa Monica, welcome to Santa Monica. By the way, um, here's the deal. If, if you wanna uh, be here and you wanna be part of our, our, our city, if you're gonna um, do any type of criminal activity, you will be held accountable. If you're gonna come sleep on the streets, I'm sorry, we, we don't have a building that you sleep on the streets and, and you're gonna have to be, have to leave if, if you're on the streets. And I would say addiction, right? If you're here to come into our city and go to uh, Reed Park and get uh, your needles and your meth pipes provided by the county of Los Angeles, we, we, we won't tolerate that. Now, the cops can't do anything about them, but I, I won't tolerate that with, with, with the needle program and things of this sort. So these are things I would push back on as well. Those are, those are, I mean, and that's, I know it's a county thing, but it's a whole different deal.
I get that, but going, so going back to the police and train stations and all this kind of stuff. So we'll come back to funding for a second. So I mean, the reason we don't have police officers on the station is cuz it's not our jurisdiction, right? The train is, the train is county.
Well, we're still right there.
We are, but, but there's a whole issue around jurisdiction of the train line, right? It's technically sheriff's jurisdiction and/or metros with whatever public safety agency metros contracted with, like, it's a little bit complicated. But there's a reason why our old office, which was next to that, that train station, was perpetually beset by actual encampments, tents, sleeping bags, the things that constitute actual encampments, because the piece of property we bordered was county land where tents could be set up because Santa Monica's laws were not in place on the county property. Like, there was this, this jurisdictional issue there. So, I, if, let's say we, you know, I get you're just spitballing an idea. So let's say we follow that idea through and you put police officers on the city property that's adjacent to the exits to the stops, right? You put them on the sidewalk. And let's say we've got the money and the funding to pay for two officers to stand there the whole time and deal with it. I mean, you need four officers cuz you got both ends of the station, whatever. So you get to it. This issue of you're gonna have officers essentially just trying to approach people that they think look homeless.
No, 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 they wouldn't approach people. Just be there welcoming people in the city.
Well, but when you say welcome, you talk about saying, hey, if you're gonna get crimes or drugs, or so like, you're gonna have police officers to stand there just saying hi to everyone that gets off the train?
No, it's people, it, everyone comes off the train, they're there and they actually have pamphlets. You know, this is an idea. I don't have all the schematics worked out, so I'll, I'll be honest with you. But the presence of them there, letting folks know, how will we communicate that? It could be a sign behind them, right? That we're not gonna tolerate this.
Sure. You're talking about like a show of force at the entry points of the city.
It's prevention, it's somewhat of a, every, we need more pushback is what, my whole scheme here about, about understanding of this is all about pushback on the, the, the criminal behavior that's happening in our city. And I'm not saying homeless people are all criminals. That's not at all what I'm saying. There's a lot of sick people there too. But I think even mentally ill folks need accountability also to get them the treatment they need. So that's all I'm saying. So that's just one, one avenue.
I get it. And I'm not, I'm not, you know, saying you, I get you're gonna have to work out details of that, but I just wanna make sure that people understand kind of where you're coming from, right? And what, what I'm hearing from you is a, a generalized idea of, of hardening the city both in its infrastructure and its personality in a way that signals to individuals who are coming here that it is not, not this, not the, the, the haven that they think it is for whatever the behavior they want to exhibit is, right? Like, you're a general and a sort of an attitude change. Um, so where I was going with that is like, if that requires more police officers, which it sounds like it does, A, how many officers does that require? And B, how are we gonna pay for that?
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's the big problem. Unfortunately, the city's pretty broke right now. We're dealing with a lot of these uh, these claims that came about, uh, I think we spent about two hundred fifty million dollars on settlements already. We got, I hear it's about a hundred, a hundred million coming down. Our whole reserve is, is diminished. Our bond rating is, 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 is actually going down now. So we have some issues there. Paying for it is, I just said twenty-five percent of the budget is, is right now is allocated to the cops. I think we, we have to look at our expenses in the city, going back to that, how, that's another way we can pay for this. But more importantly, how do we drive our economy back? It's by all three of those issues with the crime, homelessness and addiction. Once that's cleaned up effectively and under control, people wanna come back here again. They're gonna wanna go down to the promenade where forty percent of our businesses are out of business because of people will say it's COVID. I know other shopping areas across California that are doing great after COVID.
Sure. Forty percent, you don't, that's the vacancy rate, right? And that, that's the vacancy rate by square footage, like vacancy, you can change the numbers and
Call it thirty percent, whatever.
There's a percentage of, yeah, yeah, I'm not saying it's not vacant. I'm just like, you know, people will use a different number depending on if they're counting storefronts or square footage or what the, the thing is. But the bottom line is there is a high number of vacancies in the promenade. Totally get that. And I guess this gets into a little bit of a chicken and egg, right? Which is, it's like, if you, if you need, you need policing, you need additional public safety resources to reduce crime and homelessness, reducing crime and homelessness creates more revenue. You use that revenue to pay for the police officers. But there has to be an initial kickstart in there somewhere, right? And so if you're gonna look for that through efficiencies or addressing our current spending, like, where do you think the city has fat to cut to kickstart that process and begin the hiring of more officers or whatever other program you wanna fund? Like, what is it that you would decrease funding up for?
Right.
As it stands today?
Well, you know, I'm not gonna get into specifics. I don't know the specifics of where it is. I will look under the hood if I'm elected. I'll tell you that right now. I'm a business guy. Things have to pencil out. Let's just be honest, um, governments are not the best doers of our taxpayers' money, in my opinion, a hundred percent. We, we, we have a lot of wasteful spending. Just look at the homeless uh, situation. Twenty-two billion dollars were spent in California on the homeless crisis and it's unaccounted for. And homelessness issue has not gotten better. So I think we probably got the same issues within our city. I'm not talking about employees. I'm just talking about different types of services we're and we have a lot of great services. I'm not trying to cut anything. That's not my, my position, but we have to look hard where the money's going to make sure we're being efficient, even some of the great services. I know we have service providers, that great service providers providing, you know, we, we, we spend nine million dollars of our own money every year. A million dollars, I think we get from the, the county. Um, so it's called ten million dollars. Those are great agencies, but there's no measure of success on any of them. We don't have any idea how they're doing. You know, it's just, here's the money, hope and pray it's being spent right. To me, that's unacceptable. We need to have accountability. We need to have a real look at these things. Doesn't mean we don't have great people. And the other issue I think is we're not coordinating the efforts. We waste a lot of money because, you know, one agency's doing something, we're not, the right hand's not touching the left hand. So we're not, we're not combining uh, forces to really be efficient. So that's a big picture thing that needs to be addressed. How do we pay for more cops and, and, and the services as you just asked? So I think we, we do need to look at um, immediately, I think we can correct it, right, pretty quick. If we can address the homelessness and the crime, um, and this addiction issue very rapidly, I'm just gonna take a list of measures. I mean, I can't do it on my own. I need a ma- a majority in there cuz the other candidates are not really serious about fixing these issues. They, I think they all want when I say the other candidates, I'm talking about the last forty years, it's been this, this group that's been controlling, right? The slate I'm on with, with Phil Brock and Oscar De La Torre and Vivian Rockman and I, we're serious about fixing these issues and hitting them head-on. Not talking about the drone programs. We already have a drone program already. So I think um, that has to happen quickly. You know, there's, we have a lot of property in the city. I think we're one of the biggest landowners uh, uh, in the state of, of property, of the city. We have a lot of property. We gotta look at those. What are those, what, what, what kind of resources are those to us? Can we use those for any types of resources, you know? I think of this sort.
Well, kind of, except we can't because the state, how's, the state, the rule that requires us to have a housing element explicitly requires state uh, city property to be used to fund the construction of like affordable housing. Like, there's a rule, that's why the parking lots on Wilshire are in this affordable housing process. That's why we had to go through the, the surplus land act over at the civic center. Like, there is a, the, the state actually has a mechanism in place that, to the best of my knowledge, doesn't allow a city to just sort of move city municipal property into a for-profit enterprise. Like, it's all about
But we could sell, we could sell something, you know?
I don't know if we, I mean, I have to double check the rules, but I don't think we actually can outright sell stuff.
Well, my, my point is, let's look at all those options, right? I don't, I'm not saying that's, you, I'm just kinda giving you an example. We should be looking at resources. The most important thing we can do is turn this around quickly. We need our cops. And I, I know, you know, um, people all want the same and, and why are we not putting more effort into uh, protecting with, with public safety with our officers and even our fire service? They're getting called out a lot too. So, we need to, we need to stop the amount of calls going to the homeless uh, calls. And that, how do we do that? We reduce the homeless situation, the crime and the addiction. All three of those things go together. So it is, it's a pivotal time with chicken and egg. I get that, you know? It, it deserves a really, really hard look and how we can, we can address that though.
And so, again, I know I sound like a jerk when I talk to candidates about this cuz the same things come up over and over again, but I'm talking to city council candidates in Santa Monica for give or take ten years and in other communities before that for another ten years. And to say that themes emerge is an understatement.
I'm sorry?
To say that themes emerge is like an understatement. There are just the same talking points that seem to, that are universally occur throughout these kinds of conversations. And one of them, and it's no fault of your own, like, you, you, you haven't been through twenty years of talking to things like I have.
I'm not even serving you. I'm, I'm just a guy running.
But one of these is this notion of, of, of looking at what we're doing and finding efficiencies and the, the, the statement or the phrase of I'm gonna find, I can look for efficiencies, I'm gonna find some money somewhere, let's evaluate what we've got going on. Like, a variation on that is, is very, 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 very common. And perpetually, the answer to I look is like, well, we, we have audits, we have regular audits. There's an audit subcommittee in, in the city. We do, we have an audit of the, some of the homeless service providers and it did in fact find there was unaccounted for money and there was, there were things around that. And what quickly emerges to me out of these conversations is other people who, some of whom will agree with you politically and some of whom won't, have had the same idea. And yet, we're still in this situation. And I kind of, as a, as a resident of any city, in this city in particular where I live now, I get to the point where I'm I sort of looking for candidates who are gonna go beyond the idea of I'm gonna look for a solution or look for money, or I think there's something out there to sort of reel nuts and bolts, manipulation may be the wrong term, alterations to the things that I look at are gonna really make a substantive difference, right? And so, when we look at something like this whole issue of crime and homelessness, I get it. I totally understand where you're coming from and everyone, anyone else does around this. If you find a way to reduce the number of people coming into the city, the programs you have that are housing people will start to show more results and that'll decrease the number of calls into the police department, which will accrue police services, like, I totally get all of that. But that's also what people wanted to do two years ago and it's what people, you know, Phil promised a fifty percent reduction in homelessness when he ran four years ago. And again, it hasn't happened. And so I come back to the notion of given who you are, right? Like, I guess in some ways, what makes you so confident that you're gonna, you're, you're gonna do something different, right? Why are you the outlier that's gonna actually have actionable change based around that? And, and I'll follow that up for you in particular. And again, it's not criticism, I just think it's a statement of fact, which is that like, you are new to the civic process as far as I know, right? Like, you and I haven't interacted at any planning commission meetings or, or, or you know, a neighborhood group association meeting or the Wiseman's Club or the, the audit committee or the We Are Santa Monica events or like, like, I go to a lot of stuff, right?
Yeah.
And so, you seem to be someone who is new to the civic process and that's great. People get motivated and involved all the time. But it suggests to me that you have a lot of learning to do about how a municipality actually runs, which contributes to my question of why are you so confident you're gonna be able to steer the ship?
Yeah. Well, it's true. I mean, I'm new to all this. I'm just a really concerned resident. Number one, I care about this community. I'm not a politician. The facts are, is I don't have any aspirations of doing anything besides just getting into this role and helping the city. Now, I'm uniquely qualified in a lot of different ways. Um, I started my first business at nineteen. I understand about perseverance and how you get things done. I think a lot of these bureaucrats who have all this experience, how's it work for you guys? Huh? How, how's it work? I don't think very well. And I'm pissed at it as much as you are. Like, I get really emotional about this because this is not acceptable. And I'm a fighter. I got nothing to, I'm, I, I'm my own person. No one owns me, all right? So if I get in there, I don't give a crap. I will, I will find my way and I will find what's going on. And I will be effectively addressing these issues on the best interest of our residents. That's the bottom line. And at this, at this point, I, I'm frustrated. Like, I think I talked to so many people on the streets, said, oh God, what really can we do at this point? You know, the same old thing, just like you're saying. Well, I'm a fresh guy. I got a fresh look. And I'm not a bureaucrat and I haven't been part And I'm not a bureaucrat and I haven't been part of the system for all these years. I'm a warrior. I will fight for the residents. And this is not just a BS line. I'm telling you, like, I don't care. I don't have anything to lose here. I'm not trying to gain popularity contest. I just care about the residents. I care about my family. I care about my friends. I care about this community. So when it comes to that. That's my statement. That's all, that's all I got. And you know, and and going back to my inexperience, again. How well has that been serving the folks of our community? All this experience, all these committees, people, yeah, they know the bureaucratic system. It's not that, in my opinion, it's not that hard to ask questions. And once you ask questions, you can, you drill down, you get deeper and deeper. You find out the root of the problem. You know? I've been studying my ass off, excuse me. I've been studying so much about about policy and what our history is in our city. And I'm a quick learner, and I've learned a lot. And it it shocks me when I'm learning.
What's, what's the most shocking slash surprising thing you have learned?
Oh, God. Well, I think the accountability. I don't, I know we have audits and I think. Who was the, the big audit company came in and and did their audit in the city, Moss Adams, right? They did audit on on the city. You know, they did, you know, that, for example, that that whole audit was was not transparent. A hundred percent. You know, there was, there was a lot of conversations that were happening to get the audit the way it looked, and it still didn't look very good to me. So, you know, these are things that I think there's a lot of political will in the city. I think there's a, there's a group of people that really are concerned about losing control. And I don't think they're serving, I don't think they're meeting the residents where they're at right now. I think we're, we're in a different time. That pendulum has swung and I think. As far as other issues of of what I've learned, just shocked that, I know that there was a question on the, on the audit report. Like, you know, how come you haven't checked in and and addressed these issues? And and there was comments that we just overstaffed, we don't have time, you know, that kind of stuff. That's just, you know what that is? That's the CEO of a company is our city manager. The board of directors is the city council.
Yep.
Reports to us, right? And we, 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 we vote on behalf of the residents. The issue with the city manager's situation right now, I believe, is, you know, it's. Is you have someone who who's trying to do his best. I think, I'm sure he's a good man. I haven't met David yet. I'm gonna get a chance to meet him. But I think he needs to really effectively work with the council in a real strong way. I know that there's a, there's a policy, for example. You know, the the city council can't work, talk directly to the police chief.
Yeah, so the theoret, I guess theoretically because stuff happens the way it happens, but council members are not supposed to be directing. Staff, they're supposed to be issuing direction and giving thoughts and desires to the city manager because.
He is the CEO.
He's the direct report, the the staff direct report to him, right? And so all the department heads are supposed to report to the city manager. The council's supposed to say, hey, city manager, I want department X to do Y, and then the city manager.
And that's his job. I, and I respect that. That's kind of the, you know, I respect that. I guess it's just that the perception of that doesn't smell too good to me. But, you know, I hope to work with him if he, if if I get elected and and we find a way to to make this city a better place.
So, and I get, and I get your passion and I, you know, I understand where you're coming from on that. When it comes to stuff like working with the city manager, city hasn't, the city's had a rocky road with city managers. In the last ten years, you know, there's Rod was here when I got here. He left. You know, we had an interim and then we had Rick Cole, and Rick Cole quit mid pandemic. Then we had Lane. Lane moved on, then we had another interim, and then we had, now we've got David. And differing city managers have had vastly different styles, personas. I think they've actually almost had totally different jobs. Depending on what the council wants of them. So I guess, are you, are you satisfied with both the city manager and the current staff? Do you think they are doing, A, their jobs appropriately and B, doing the best they can on behalf of residents?
Right. Well, you know, I think this, again, I'm sure David's a fine man. Unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to meet with him. I'm trying to get a meeting with him next week to. Talk with him and just get to know him. And I hear he's a decent person. I'm sure he's doing the best he can do. You know, I think he's been served with, again, this forty years of mechanism that's been through the system, which the staff is part of. And they're, they're, they're good people too. They're hardworking people, but there's just been a way it's been operating, right? And I think that all has to be relooked at, you know, this, the staff situation is, is they're, they're doing what they're being told to do. And it's just kind of this whole process between the manager, the city council and and the staff. You know, I know. I know there's probably, and I haven't looked under the hood there, so I can't really tell you, but I assume there's a lot of stuff there that we can help build efficiencies. I would like to work with a city manager that will will be. Report directly to the the council members and and provide really cliff notes. Information for the council members to vote on rather than nine hundred pages on a Friday night before a Tuesday meeting. You know, those are kind of things that, if if I'm in, I might come let the city manager do that to me. I'm gonna say, listen, you have to provide this, so it's, it's obtainable, so we can, we can digest it rather than trying to get to nine hundred page. Who can do that? A minutia, right? So those are the kind of things that I'm learning that are, aren't efficient, aren't productive. Keep people there to two or three o'clock in the morning sometimes at the city council meetings, which, you know, selfishly, I would look to try to streamline that. Just from being a manager myself.
No, I I understand the Lake City Council meetings. Like, I have to watch them all. I mean, the reason they go long is because council members won't shut up and just vote on stuff. I mean, like, the bottom line, like, you know, like, we'll have a blunt conversation about it, like, personal two cents, the council members are watching this.
Yeah.
You know, you could straw poll vote at the start of an issue and see if you've got a four, three or five, two majority or whatever. And you could abbreviate comments for a few minutes, realizing what the vote's gonna be, and then someone can give, could give an explanation of their vote at the end. And you could probably short circuit two hours of debate into thirty minutes.
I'm down with that.
You could if you wanted to.
I, 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 I mean, listen, everyone needs to be accountable in those meetings, but that's, that's, that's what we have to deal with there.
I watch a lot of those, but I wanna follow up real quick on, as you mentioned a couple of times about this forty year history, and you're not wrong there, right? Like, the city's had a predominant political force since the establishment of rent control that has mostly, not, I don't wanna say quite universally. But really run the table when it comes to elections, right? Like, there are a handful of blips. Like, one was twenty twenty when the city was looted and there was rioting and protests, right? That was a blip. And then there's a cut, there's, there's historically been a council member perhaps who is outside that system, like, it's happened. You know, but the two most dominant predictors of Santa Monica elections are incumbency. And we can shorthand it to the the Santa Monica's rights, the smur endorsement, right? Like, those are the two things. And the smur endorsement is bigger than just their one group. Like, there's some, the unions affiliated with it, it touches the progressive organizations. But like, that cadre of folks and or incumbency are the two largest predictors. And unfortunately, you have neither. So I'm, and you know, the answer to this question is someone can be like, well, we'll see where the election is. But like, why, what is it that you are seeing out there in this community that makes you think? This year is going to buck that trend or 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 break that cycle?
Yeah, well, it's interesting. I've been out every morning, every night, meeting residents and the community, business owners. Just really talking, and I've got, I think I really have a good sense of the pulse of 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 our community by doing that. It's, I'm all parts of the city. I'll be on Ocean Park one morning and then I'll be, you know, over in Pico area. The one resounding issue, I don't care if you're a voter or a rich homeowner, they would, they would consider some of those folks. Everyone's feeling the same thing. If you're a renter, what's, what's happening right now, which a lot of seventy percent, as we know, are are renters who. Are in the city, right? And smur does ha- have had a handle on that for a long time. They're messaging, you know? Our messaging is, is to preserve rent control and renters' rights. So that's off the table. We're, we're the same on those issues. So that, but that's been the whole narrative. That's what's got them in the power they have for all those years. And it's more than renters' control. Now it's a power situation. They control a lot of things, but they use the voters for that purposes. I think these voters or renters right now have eyes. A lot of them are walking out their doors and they're seeing what's happening. They have people laying in in their, in their pathways. They have homeless people coming at them from each side of the street. They've seen the crime. They've heard about the rapes that have been happening in the city. And renters, they don't have places to go. You know, I have a yard. I'm pretty fortunate. I'm very blessed. They don't, they depend on our parks. I I talked to a woman yesterday on the street. She had her baby. You know, we live in this apartment here. I just don't know where to go. I try to go, you know, this ain't gonna open the libraries again, but then, but then I have to go through all these questions to get in. And they don't have that one open. And there's no place for these renters to go. And why is that, right? It's not because the smur people are, are, who've been in control for forty years have, have, have protected the situation. And and worried about the residents in a real way. These are, these are people, so I'm, what's interesting? I feel I'm pilling away a lot of those voters. Our slate is pilling away a lot of those voters that are former smur people. They're, they're realizing that this is kind of not working for them. And so that's, that's, that's a pulse of the market, really. Addressing the homelessness, the crime and the addiction.
I got it. So we're, we're running up against our time limit a little bit, so I wanna make sure, is there, outside of those things we talked about already? Is there something else that you wanted to talk about? Is there another subject?
Yeah, I know. We had the debates a couple of weeks ago and, you know, I don't think this this housing element is fair to our residents.
You know. For folk, nutshell so people understand.
Oh, yeah.
The state has, the state requires a certain number of housing units to be built in certain jurisdictions. That filters down. Someone might call it the RENA allocation. The bottom line is there's an outside agency that comes in and says Santa Monica has to build about, give or take, nine thousand new housing units. And we have a housing element, which is the plan the city has to put forward and able to do that. If we don't have that plan, we lose local control of zoning. Like, very nutshell version for folks. Yeah, go ahead.
That's good. So in two thousand nineteen, the the council, it wasn't Phil and Oscar on there that you know, two thousand nineteen. They accepted the state's housing element of, I think it's about eighty eight hundred, over eighty hundred. And then, and then sixty one hundred of those units approximately are for affordable housing, right? Okay, that sounds like a bad idea right away, only not because we don't need affordable housing. It's because there was no analysis done on that. They just accepted it.
Well, but you don't have a choice.
Well, you do.
You literally don't.
I know, it's a state. What I'm, what am I point is, but there is some types of 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 time to be able to take a look what what it does to our community. I think you you push back at that point. You don't just accept it. You don't, you know, you would need to look at the research. That's when you start calling in lawyers if you need to. Because it's, it's so devastating, not, not, the eighty eight hundred units is not devastating. It's a thirty thousand plus unit that people don't, I mean, that people in the city don't understand that's what's gonna happen. The reason is, the state doesn't care how much development. What they care about is meeting the sixty one hundred units. Well, you could blame on developers. I don't think the developers are the bad guys here. It's still the state, because the state has put no restrictions on those developers. So only about fifteen to eighteen percent of every project is goes for affordable. So if you just do the numbers alone on that.
Sure, yeah. The way, the way this works out is you can have, you have a project and you have a percentage of affordable units in it, and you hit a certain percentage. You can double the size of your project and then the state density bonuses allow developers to supersede and ignore local zoning. That would prohibit them from getting to said density, like, again, complicated issue. There's a whole process that, to your point, allows large developments. With a relatively small percentage of affordable housing. I totally get that. I guess you talk about pushback, because I hear a lot of people talk about this. And A, like, I don't know of anywhere that successfully pushed back on its RENA allocation. B, I think the builder's remedy, which is the thing we fell into when when we were out of compliance with the housing element. Shows the folly of fighting the state when the state can just change the rules at a whim and guarantee you lose. And then that leads into a discussion of what, you know, is that an efficient use of municipal time, energy and resources?
Well, I think, I think it's, it's our cities. We're gonna, it's like us committing suicide if this happens, because. All the resources, in this whole RENA Act, by the way, none of this was considered. Sewer, infrastructure, power, water, none of it was considered in this arena numbers. Our city council in two thousand nineteen, that was, is part of that forty years program, never asked that question, never pushed back. I understand it, it's a tough battle. But I will tell you, the state's out of Calif, and California's in some financial trouble. What I've recently, reports I've heard is that we're, we're, some of those things are not moving forward because of the money issues. So this is, this might give us some time to to fight it out a little bit. I just, you know, maybe I'm being impractical about this, but I, I don't think we have any other option. We have to fight back. And when I say fight back, I'm talking about other municipals. I know there's other people, but if this is a collapsed communities, we need to, we need to go all in on this. It, it's dangerous. It's not, it's not, it's, what about the police and fire resources? All those things cost money, and I don't think the state doesn't care. Unfortunately, the state is the boogeyman here. It's not the developers. It's not our community. Sure, I think proper development is important to grow as a community. I think we definitely need to have affordable housing, and we want people to live here. I want, you know, I, I want everyone to have that opportunity, but this is not a good approach, and we need to do something about it.
So wha- what is the, when you say, you know, appropriate development, what does that mean for you? Like, how many housing units? Do you think the city of Santa Monica should be producing over the next, you know, six years, you know, housing element cycle lifespan?
I think what no one pays attention to, what I just mentioned, the infrastructure. What's that gonna take? What about the environmental, environment, that's, it's environmental damages it's causing to our community, right? We need to look at all that stuff to make sure you don't just force something down, someone throw it and say, oh, worry about it later. Those, those are just details. These are important details. What about the economy of our city? When you're building, like, a thirty three story buildings, we're, we're gonna be like New York City. Is anybody worried about that? And I honestly, I, the other side, I talked to some of them and they just think it's, oh, this is my, this could be, like, what's wrong? You know, nothing wrong with Miami. Some of it don't want that.
Right, and I think, but so I think there's a couple of points about that. A, that's not a number, which is what I asked for.
Yeah, you want a number of how?
Yeah, like.
What's, what's appropriate amount of number?
Over the next year, five years, six years, like, how much?
I, I think we gotta look at what our space is, right? I, I can't give you the fact, because I, I don't know the number on this, okay? But the state made up sixty one hundred. Out of nowhere. How do they make that number up? So you see what I'm saying? I would at least look at, at what's, what, what we can handle, what we can do. You know, we can only build so much. Yeah, we can build skyscrapers and we don't have infrastructure. We gotta look at the infrastructure. We gotta look at the spaces we have. And let's do it in a very, you know, we're, we're beach city that that's not made up of.
So, so I get, I hear, so you don't really have a number right now. You look at it.
Sure.
Cool. We'll move on from that. But when we get into this notion of. Like, you talk about destroying communities and other people say things like that, or the notion of skyscrapers are bad, like, I'm gonna go bad or indifferent. That is an opinion, right? Like, there are folks who believe that high-density housing, thirty three stories or otherwise. Is appealing. There are folks who argue that a urban, a dense urban environment is a place that they would enjoy living in. And so when you get into the notion of like, is that good or bad for the city? You know, I, I sort of are questioning, why is it, like, in your mind, why is it a bad thing to move to a dense urban environment? Like, what is it that is destroyed, lost, changed, that is worth preserving, right? Because change and destruction and evolution are a natural force. We always lose, you often lose something to make something new. It's a question of what's worth preserving, right? General borderline philosophy, I don't think that something is worth preserving just because it exists, nor is it worth preserving just because it's old, right? Like, you have to have redeeming value. So what is it about the character of Santa Monica that you think will be lost? If we do in fact move towards more of this high-density urban-style development?
Yeah. First of all, I don't wanna act like I'm out of touch and I'm like old school and just want it to be the way it is. If the, if the residents decide they want a Miami here, then that, that's something that can be discussed. And I don't, I'm not gonna have a say in that initially. That's gonna be on more of a bigger picture. I am concerned, though, environmentally, how are we protecting our city? If we're trying to be part of this green initiative, what is, what is green about that? And number two, what, I keep going back, but what about the infrastructure and the costs of being able to do this and be able to support this? We're gonna be talking about tearing up streets, huge water, water lines. We're gonna have to get outside water. It's a, it, it's a lot more than just building this dream community of of New York City and Miami. I don't think that's the pulse of the market, but at the end of the day, we gotta be able to support the infrastructure. Our resources, our, our police, fire and safety, all that just goes up. We're talking thirty thousand units. You know what they do to us? That's, that's units. That's probably, this is estimate, that's forty five thousand people. Do you know these, these, these large developments, they don't have parking for, for, for all the units?
Right, they're no longer required.
That's a whole nother issue. I know we don't have time to get into it, but these are not well thought out things. And I think there's a, a part of people that wanna get rid of cars, which is, I understand. That that's an ultimate dream, but we're not there right now.
So, so my question is, what, what about Santa Monica is going to be lost to these? And I heard you talk a lot about your concerns around infrastructure and money and costs and, and the the mechanics of can we physically do it? The only thing I heard that would be lost, and this is my synthesization of what you said. You know, Santa Monica has a water self-sufficiency plan that's been perpetually kicked down the road for all kinds of reasons. Like, that was what I heard. You would, we would lose to this development, like, water rise. We wouldn't be water self-sufficient. Like, that was what I heard, you would, we would lose to this development, like, water rise, we wouldn't be water self-sufficient. Um, but I just wanna make sure that I, I, we're clear and if there was. If, if you, you didn't, I didn't hear you talk about the character of the city or its personality or anything like that. Now, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I'm just trying to figure out if, if that's what you're talking, if that's also what you're concerned about? Or were you really, are you really just concerned about the, the logistics, the mechanics, the?
I, I'm just talking about the nuts and bolts, because you had asked, you had asked about that, right? Listen, um, this is a dream city. It's a beautiful city. It's a beachside uh place where people wanna come. I, I deeply care about the aesthetics and the way it looks. I think we have to be careful with it. I grew up in San Luis Obispo, they're a very good job of development up there. They've, they've really built it in nicely. Um, I think just this overbuild situation is not attractive, I think, to the residents. And I don't think it's an attractive tourist that we, fifty percent of our tax revenue comes from, from our businesses that come, come from tourists that come out through here for, to sales tax. These are things that, that will decimate that side of it financially, but more importantly, this is our community that we need to protect. And we need to look at it in a really holistic viewpoint to make sure it's being done in a very uh thoughtful way, not just start building shit. You know?
I got you. Um, so again, we're running up against our time, like, we can go into many more aspects, but, you know, try to cut it off roughly at the same time for everybody. Um, is there, do you wanna make a closing statement? Is there something you wanted to say to people at the end?
Yeah, um, I, I just, I really care about this community, as I said earlier. Um, I'm concerned what's happening. Um, I'm, I, I think my, my wife and I, we go for walks every morning, uh, we see, see the city, we talk to people, but. It's, it needs to be corrected what's happening and there's certain leadership that is capable of that. I will say, uh, Phil and Oscar are running on, on the same state as us. They've only been in there for about three years. And um, you know, they had the city manager change, we had, we had the pandemic. And so what they got started, they really haven't been able to finish. And I think with Vivian and I and Oscar. Uh, and Phil on there, we can effectively make the change. If, if our state doesn't get in, expect more of the same.
Got it. Cool.
Okay.
Let's see, thanks for coming by.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.